We're going to call to session this special work session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Thank you. Since tonight is a special work session, our agenda is going to be a little different than normal. We will start with a presentation from the Tacoma Park Board of Elections. And then after that, we will open it up for public comments and questions from the public, if there are any. And then council will have the opportunity for public comments and to ask questions of the board and follow-up. And then after that, we'll continue with council discussion and some direction on next steps. Next week, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday on September 21st, depending on the direction of this meeting tonight, we have a tentative resolution on our calendar for September 21st. So with that, I will turn it over to Marilyn Abbott.
Thank you. I'm Marilyn Abbott, as most of you know, and I'm chairman of the Board of Elections. With me is Brian Ernst, who's our vice chairman, Beatrice York, and David Arthur, Arthur David Olson. If at some point they think that I have either skipped over something, they will jump in, or if they think something needs to be added, they'll jump in. I have a few written, a few comments that follow the bullet points that were provided you. Just to start, in July, the board received guidance to proceed with planning for the city, to synchronize its election date with the statewide general election. Today, we're going to give you our considerations of looking into this. The first, our first primary consideration was and remains the voter experience. We looked at voter registration, absentee ballot procedures, and early and election day processes. Regarding early and election day processes, the ideal setup would be one check-in only, but that may be difficult to accommodate. The reasons for this include different voter bases, same-day registration considerations, and different ballot styles. Therefore, on election day, the board proposes sharing space in the four Tacoma Park precincts with the county. Voters would report to their usual precinct on election day. At the polling place, a voter would check in with Montgomery County. Election officials receive, mark, and cast a ballot as usual. And at the same location, voters would check in separately with city election officials to receive a Tacoma Park ballot to mark and cast. With two separate check-ins, we propose that a Tacoma Park voter at the wrong precinct be directed to either their correct precinct, be informed that they could vote provisionally, or could choose to exit. That would be their decision. Our processes therefore would parallel the county processes, with the notable exception that Tacoma Park would continue to register Tacoma Park residents on election day to vote in the city election. Montgomery County does not do same-day registration on election day. We are also proposing that voting be available at the Tacoma Park municipal building on election day for voting in the Tacoma Park election. For early voting, we consider the location of county polling places, cost to locate at all locations, and security chain of custody issues regarding voted ballots for the city election. Based on these deliberations, the board is proposing Tacoma Park voting stations staffed by election judges at select locations, including the Silver Spring Civic Center and the Tacoma Park Municipal Building, and that all early voting be by absentee ballot. Election judges at the voting stations will register Tacoma Park only voters or refer voters for state registration. Tacoma Park voters will receive an absentee ballot and be able to either mark it and return it at the voting station, or take the absentee ballot with them to be marked later and mailed. We further propose that postage for these mailed absentee ballots be paid by the city. Implicit in all this is the need for much coordination between the city and county to determine the location of the Tacoma Park presence, voter flows, training, and communications between elections officials. In looking at voter registration and absentee ballot procedures, we have identified some areas, such as coordinating information regarding requests for absentee ballots and adding new registrations to the poll book that could be coordinated between county and city staff. For instance, if I request an absentee ballot from the county, the county could forward that information to the city, and the city could either issue me an absentee ballot or see if I would also want an absentee ballot provided to me for the city election. There is already a lot of coordination between the staffs regarding registrations. In addition, there are probably opportunities for more. We would need to work closely with the county board to determine these. Overall, we believe that synchronizing the election date will change the Tacoma Park election process. A longer election cycle, we have proposed adding a month, will enable us to sync with the state schedule. There will be multiple locations for voting in the municipal election, as well as initially at least, two voting processes. Concerning city wards, they do not conform to precinct boundaries. And for instance, residents in some wards, and particularly 1, 2, and 3, would go to one of three precincts to vote. That would not be, as people are used to for the city election, now one location on voting. Further, announcement of preliminary vote counts and certification of the election may be delayed, with the potential for an increase in provisional ballots. As we have suggested, we would have voters at the wrong precinct vote provisionally. It may be that a majority vote cannot be determined election night. Results may need to wait for the provisional ballots to be adjudicated, and typically, this does not occur until the day after the election. And Tacoma Park has usually been able to do that in one day. We do not know if there is an increased number, if that would still be possible. The last major concern of the board is staffing. Our estimates are that we will need to recruit and train at least four times as many persons as we used in the 2015 election. So that's approximately 50 people. Also, with multiple early location election day sites, we will need to train chief judges and voter registration agents for each site to assure a consistency across practices, across the sites. This recruitment significantly will take place at the same time the county is recruiting election judges for statewide elections. So we would be in competition with the county, or potentially would be in competition with the county. We struggled over cost estimates. We tried to do an estimate based on the minimum number of judges that we deem necessary, as well as a rover in staffing the municipal building. We did an estimate for supplies for multiple locations and planned for an increase in rental of poll books for the county, as well as scanners for each location and the municipal building on election day. The high end of our estimate on this went to $60,000. How valid that estimate is, it's an estimate. To help with your understanding of some of the numbers, we have pulled together some tables that we provided you in your packet. And I'm not sure if I skipped anything, but that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Before we open it up for public comments, does anyone in the city council have any clarifying questions for the board? No? Does the city clerk want to add anything?
No.
Not at this point? All right. Then if there are any public comments this evening, you can go to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Robert Lance. I live on Cedar Avenue. I have a couple of questions and comments. One comment is that if you have a voting location where you only have city voting and not county voting, I see some issues with that because I think people will come here expecting to be able to vote in city and county. They won't be able to, and there won't be provisional ballots available for county at this city-only location. You'll end up sending people away. And I think it is better to just say, you're going to have city-county voting wherever you have it, and no city voting without county voting anywhere. Another issue, well, question, is why can't you do early voting the same way the county does? Just have an early voting place, wherever the county has an early voting place, and do the same thing they do, rather than have a separate process for that. Another thing is that provisional ballots are very labor-intensive. When I was an election judge, I did approximately 60 provisional ballots for people that came to the wrong place. They're complicated. People don't like them because they don't know if their vote's actually going to be counted. As the presentation said, they don't get counted right away. Sometimes they don't get counted at all, allegedly. So you really want to have a process that avoids anybody having to have a provisional ballot, because that causes a lot of complications. The last thing is that, as a former election judge myself, you are going to have to solicit and train a lot of people. I understand that. And that's going to be a process that everybody's going to need to be prepared for. I've attended county election training. It's an all-day event. So you're going to have to be prepared to train a whole lot of people, and I appreciate the board for pointing that out. Otherwise, the objective is to make this for the voter as seamless as possible. They're going to be getting in two lines, they're going to be getting two ballots. You want everything possible to be as straightforward as possible, so they don't get in the wrong line, end up in the wrong place, and end up not voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening?
Mayor Stewart, members of the council, my name is Damon Effingham. I come today as a representative of Common Cause Maryland. I live in Washington DC. I'm originally from the eastern shore of Maryland. I've never had the pleasure of living in this lovely city, but at some point in the future, I feel like it looks, it looks like it might happen. Thank you guys for giving me a moment to speak today. I, as I said, I've never lived here, I've never spoken here before, so it's a little bit of a different experience. But at Common Cause, what we do is, we've been around since 1974, and there are chapters in 35 states. We work tirelessly to promote good government and fair election issues and policies that increase citizen access to and participation in our government. Now, I don't have a lot of experience of moving off-year on to regular year, but even where jurisdictions have changed from the gubernatorial cycle in Maryland to the presidential cycle, they've seen great increases in participation. And Baltimore, in particular, just recently did this and saw a sevenfold increase in participation in their city's primary this year, over the 2011. They also, as reported by the Baltimore Sun, saved $3 million. So while there are some issues that obviously Tacoma Park is special in a way that Common Cause greatly admires, that would require a certain amount of financial investment different than Baltimore, there still are potential savings that could be pretty great. And then just looking at the numbers that the city board of elections has put out, it's fairly obvious how huge of an impact moving these elections would have on, creating an electorate that is more representative of the population in this city than the one that turns out on odd-year elections.
Any other comments this evening? Marilyn, would you like to?
If I'd like to comment regarding Mr. Lance, the board looked at four scenarios for early voting. And we also looked at the number of Tacoma Park early voters in the statewide elections. We, because of the, some of the difficulties we saw in the cost with early voting, we were able to identify, though, that 96% of our voters who vote early in those elections vote in Silver Spring. And our recommendation was quite a bit based on that number, that we would capture 96% of our early voters. And I won't discuss the four scenarios, but we did discuss four scenarios for early voting possibilities.
Any other, anyone else from the board like to comment and provide any more information?
Thank you for your presentation, and I hope this doesn't force you to go into the scenarios, but we have, we currently have more early voting days than the state-county process. Is that correct?
I think we're equal. I believe each of us use eight now, but the hours are different. The hours are...
The length of the day.
So we, because of the recent expansion at the state level, it's pretty close to same time.
They have more hours of early voting than we do.
Okay. Okay. Then never mind.
Comments, questions from the council?
I guess I have a question, as a former member of the Board of Elections. And I appreciate you all doing this. I don't know if, in other jurisdictions where they've made a move towards synchronizing, whether it was the charge of the Board of Elections, a community group, to do the hard work that you're doing, so I really appreciate that. And I'm glad I got out when I did. What are the implications, if at all, on the gentleman, Mr. Effingham? Maybe you can talk about this, of synchronization on the nonpartisan nature of our elections here. Have you looked into that issue? I'm just curious if in certain jurisdictions, when you do synchronize your elections, you know, could Peter Kovar run on the Jamie Raskin, you know, ticket, or can Rizzi Koreshi do that? I'm just curious about what sort of dictates that and how that's impacted. Because I personally, and I think others on this, on this diocese here, are able to run for this position because of the nonpartisan nature of our elections and municipal elections in general. So that would be one question that I had. I'll leave it at that. I have some other follow-up, but I'll open it up to my colleagues. And I presume there's not an immediate answer, but I would...
No immediate answer.
All right. Thank you.
At least, I mean, at least through 2018, since it's a separate process for Tacoma Park, there's, the city will maintain the nonpartisan nature of the election. Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I don't want to speculate, so I'll stop there.
Actually, this raises, I think, a good question maybe for people who are watching at home, or just to follow along. If you want to explain what we've talked about in terms of 2018 and what would happen versus possibly 2020, what we might work towards.
The, the main issue that has taken us to discussing 2018 has been that we are not at this time able to have a unified ballot. I would say that was the main issue. I understand that is being addressed in a task force, which is outside of anything that we're doing. Also, the issue of some of our voters who are not on the state poll book, those voters we could probably work around, but the main issue that's been driving this is that we cannot have a unified ballot. Need to discuss the unit, need to have separate ballots at this time. We do not know in 2020. And also, to protect the voting rights of citizens that we've extended voting rights to, and, well, to protect that, that I would not be able to vote in statewide elections.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. I had not known that Cumberland, Maryland, had also made its elections synchronous with state/federal elections until the background packet. So I thank the city clerk or the commission for pulling together that information. Do you, do you know what happened when they transitioned? I'm assuming there was a transition from off-cycle to on-cycle. Was there, is there any data on that?
We didn't have any, no.
Okay. I wanted to ask about the table you put together on the last page of the handout where we had 18% turnout in 2011, 10% in 2013, and 21% in 2015, and then 45% and 77% in the, both the gubernatorial and then the presidential. Based on your work on this, is there any evidence to suggest that we wouldn't end up with all or almost all of those voters? So did you, is there anything that led you to think that we wouldn't get 45% when we had a gubernatorial year, city council election, or 77% or something very close to?
We briefly discussed trying to determine if we synchronized the election, how many of those voters we would add to the voter base. My mind boggled at trying to do it. So we really did not have time to do that. Also, just a bit of an explanation, between July and today, we did take the month of August off. But, so...
Unarranged.
So anyway, I don't know if anybody looked into that issue of how many additional we think we might reach. As a board, we did not.
Councilmember Smith?
I appreciate you guys' hard work on this. I still haven't changed my position on not supporting synchronizing our elections, but I do have a few questions. Ms. Abbott, you mentioned absentee voting and the city paying for the ballot. Did you guys consider if we just have vote by mail, and you don't have to actually request a ballot, but we just mail out ballots and people can just send them in?
We did, yes, we did discuss that.
What did you guys come up with?
It's been discussed, but no, no analysis.
Because Washington State does it, and they're, they have no problems with their elections. They have a very high turnout. So I was just wondering, why haven't we gone that far?
We discussed it. It came, and I believe that's what led us to the absentee ballot, but we did not go that route.
And is there a reason why the body prefers absentee ballots?
Well, I mean, absentee ballot would be, it would be the same, you would basically be using an absentee ballot. It would be probably the similar procedures of how we would issue absentee ballots to people. The city clerk, we would, well, we would know we sent it to all registered voters. We would maintain a list regardless of how the absentee ballot is issued, a list of people who've received it. When the absentee ballot comes back, we note that the person has voted. We do not open the ballot until election day and election night. And there is a process where you do check to make sure that that person has not also come into the voting place and voted.
Switching to the matrix that you have, did you guys look at 2016 primary results?
No, we did not.
Okay. I sent out a blog post to members of the Board of Elections, and it talked about how in Montgomery County, voting for minorities continues to go down. Did you guys look at that or consider?
Yes, we did look at it. We also looked at a 2012, I believe it was, exit poll that Fair Vote had done on the Ward Five election. We sort of considered that a little bit outside of what, that analysis or that action, a little bit outside of what we were asked to do.
So the, not the Fair Vote, but I think it was Maryland Scramble did an analysis on the elections. So you guys didn't analyze what they had come up with?
I'm going to probably get the two confused, but we did not look and compare our voting patterns, like to census data. We did talk about that, it's not in here, we did talk about trying to reach those voters who are not registered, or those voters who do not come to the election. I think one of the reasons, one of the thoughts behind the, having a presence still for early voting, a personal presence, is maybe to try to reach those voters and be able to, as we said, have voting stations where we may still be able to go into the, we'd have to work on, with the county on this, but be able to go into communities and try to do early voting.
And so I guess what I want to understand is, what makes you think that by us synchronizing our elections, we will increase voting with the minority population in the city?
That was not, we did not analyze that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Ms. Abbott, and all of you on the Election Commission, I feel sympathy for your having to deal with highly speculative questions, because we all want us, we all want to have a crystal ball, and we want you to have that crystal ball and be able to tell us things that are impossible to know about how this could possibly, or might work out. So to get something to, a little bit more in the here and now, when we, in this last, this last table that was just being talked about, it talks about the number of registered voters, which is in the realm of about 11,000 people. How do the voter rolls, how do the voter rolls get purged? I mean, because people move in and out of the city in huge numbers annually, and they don't, they're not required to tell anybody on the election, Montgomery County Election Board, much less ours, that they've left. They just go, they move to, say, Virginia, and they register to vote there, and nobody knows anything about it. So just from a very practical aspect, do we really know how many registered voters there might be at any one time in the city?
I'll take a first shot on this, but it might be Jesse might want to work. We do, we are provided the voter, the current voter rolls from the state for Tacoma Park. Jesse does look at them. We do look at them. How the state rolls, rolls are purged, I will let Jesse address. But during the course of an election, you do get information on people who've moved, you do get information on people who have died. But the number is not exact. And I don't, I don't know if we could get to an exact number, to be honest.
Sure. Yeah. Jesse, do you have any comments on that?
Sure. The state does have a process for, for reducing the voter rolls when necessary, if they send a certain number of pieces of mail to an address that are returned. And that, in combination with not having voted for a certain amount of time, can cause you to become inactive, an inactive voter. So then when you come to, if you show up to vote, you have to sign a statement saying that you, confirming that your address is where you say it is. One thing I can say is that, I mean, it isn't always in an exact number, but for instance, if you vote in, if you register to vote in Virginia, what's supposed to happen is Virginia will tells Maryland. Now, I don't know how well it works, but when you register somewhere else, typically they'll send a notice to your former election officials to say that you're registered there. I mean, I even get them once in a while from other, other places. The other thing is, when I hear about errors on the voting list, there are ways to report them, so I encourage anybody who is aware of people who are dead, no longer living here, not real people, to let me know. And I can, we can examine that and report that to the, to the county board, and they'll help us out with that.
They also get the certificates.
That's right. They do.
Yeah. So I can see where there's, there's never going to be any thoroughgoing systemic way of cleansing, you know, really getting down to hard numbers. So it's kind of an iterative process based on evidence, as it appears. But, you know, given that... But, you know, given that we live in a highly, inside the Beltway here, it's a highly mobile population, with a large number of renters who are going to be probably a bit more transient, say, than the homeowners, and you've got a lot of professionals who, who by nature are going to be fairly cosmopolitan in their, in their, where they choose to live, and that sort of thing. So, it makes me, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, when we say we got this number of registered voters there, it could easily be 2,000 people or less than that, or maybe 1,000, I don't know. I mean, that's just a wild guess, because who knows? The thing is, though, so that, but if, to the extent that it's 10% less or 20% less than we think, then our voter turnout actually is, could be notably higher than, you know, because some of these people just don't live here anymore. I know where I've lived on, on Wildwood Drive, and for 30 years, there's houses there that I've seen as many as four, four turnovers, four times in those years. And that's probably true in a lot of neighborhoods across the city. So, I, I'm uncomfortable with, with the fact that we're saying that since we are focused so much on trying to bump up the percentage, I mean, that's what this whole thing's about, is pushing that percentage number up. It isn't about anything else. That's our one, one singular goal here. If we do all this and the voter turnout doesn't increase, then we would be probably likely to say, well, that was a big waste of time. But, we don't know. We just don't know. I'm not trying to speculate in that direction, but I just want to make sure that we understand the net, the, some of the play that we're, have here. That's my only question right now, I'll have some more in a minute.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I would, thank you. I would just say that I agree with Councilmember Schultz, that there's a challenge in ensuring that the numbers are right and that the registration listings are right, but I think that the extent to which the percentages would be potentially higher, I don't think that that only occurs in the local elections. So, if the question is, you know, does the 21% turnout that we had in the most recent election really represent a higher number because, or more accurately, should it be a higher number because there were fewer registered voters, then I think the same thing would apply in the 75% that we had in the presidential year, the 40-plus we had in a gubernatorial election. So, that whatever the correct numbers would be, if we were to more accurately have the listing, I still think that the gap or the relative order of magnitude between the votes that we get at local elections, state, and congressional elections, and presidential, would still be the same. And so, I agree that that's a problem, but I don't think that's in any way weakens the argument that this would promote turnout.
I think we're kind of morphing into discussion, though I hope the Board of Elections stays for this, because questions may come up, but if we want to now move to just council discussion on where we want to take this, this year, and I'll start with Councilmember Mehl.
I'm going to frame mine around just a couple of follow-up questions, in part, to follow up on Councilmember Schultz's query. In 2012, we had 8,300 voters who participated, and a year later, we had 1,100 voters participate in the city election. You have no reason to believe that 7,000 people moved out of the city, correct? That the, that the change in that election wasn't caused by 7,000 people emigrating?
Um, no.
Those are two different types of elections. You cannot compare, you know, a...
Need to have you, I'm sorry, you need to have on the, be on the microphone, please.
You, you just go up to the podium, or?
We can't, we can't hear what you're saying.
You cannot hear me?
It won't be on the...
Don't go on the television. You have to be on a microphone. Sorry.
No, I was just saying that you are talking about two different types of elections, and it's not a fair comparison. And furthermore, I just would like to add, Councilmember Schultz, I agree with what you're saying, but I think that most importantly, then, increasing the numbers would actually be having educated voters. And having a higher number of voters does not necessarily mean that they're making, making educated choices when they're voting. And in terms of the data that we're providing you with, there is not enough data here to establish a baseline for neither of, for, none of the elections, if it's going to be the City of Tacoma Park election, for which you actually have three different numbers, you know, 18%, 10%, and 21%. The 10% could be an outlier. We don't know. Only a statistical study that would go back, let's say, 50 years or more could actually provide you, you know, some more accurate information. And of course, you know, the Board of Elections, unfortunately, we don't have the capacity to do that kind of statistical study that would actually give you, you know, numbers that could be more predictable. So, in terms of comparing elections, that was just my remark, you're, you know, comparing the voter turnout from a presidential election to a City of Tacoma Park election is, is just, in my opinion, as a researcher, is not a fair comparison.
But, but just to clarify, because this is an important issue, the voter rolls for Tacoma Park are the same, they're developed through the same process. That 8,300 number came from, and the 77% turnout, came from the same list of Tacoma Park voters that we got from the state as the list the following year. There's nothing different about that process, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, that's a real difference.
It's the same list of registered voters, right?
Yeah. And to, to your point about the previous turnout, I'm not aware from the city's website, and the clerk or any other members of the board can correct me, there's no election on our, on our electronic database in which the city council election came anywhere close to the, either the gubernatorial turnout or the federal, or the presidential turnout. I believe they're all less than 50% of the turnout in the following election. So, we only have 15 elections in that database, but in every one of those 15 cases, or somewhere between 10 and 15, the turnout is at least twice as high in a gubernatorial or a, or a presidential election.
Right.
Okay. I just would like to remind of the, you know, that Tacoma Park has very specific characteristics, and non-U.S. citizens can vote in Tacoma Park elections, you know, but cannot in the other. So, I'm not, you know, saying that the specific characteristics of, of the Tacoma Park voters will have any bearing on these numbers, I'm just pointing out, you know, to, to that, to that, to that point here, so.
Excuse me, if I could interject, then, what it sounds to me is that the number of registered voters for a Tacoma Park election would in fact be greater than the number of qualified voters in, or registered voters for a non-Tacoma Park election.
That's correct.
Excuse me, do you mind if I make a short comment?
All right.
With respect to voter turnout in city elections, I know a number of people who just do not vote if there's only one candidate on the ballot. This comes up a lot in discussions of how the county judges are reelected every 10 years. A lot of people just skip those, because the judge only has to vote for himself, and the judge gets elected. So, when you're doing a comparison between a presidential election and an election where there's only one candidate on the ballot, even if you have voting on the same day in, you know, 2018, if people have only one candidate to vote for in a city election, they might not get in that second line. They might vote for the president and the Congress and the Senate, and they might go home, because there's only one candidate on the city ballot. So, you need to consider that when you're doing this kind of a comparison between odd and even numbered elections. Thank you.
Councilmember Mehl, did you want to continue on that?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions and comments. I just, to that point, that, that may well be true, the only experience that I'm aware of we have in Maryland is Ocean City, where many of their council seats for the last two elections were uncontested. They still had fewer than 10, a 10-voter difference in participation in the federal election and the county, county, city council election. So, even though those races were uncontested, in some cases, almost every single person still voted, and their turnout, I think, was twice as high as Tacoma Park's percent was. The, to the question about turnout and what it's for, and minority turnout, I think that turnout is not just simply to run up the numbers, it's to help make our democracy more representative and have people participate. So, an indicator of success in participation is turnout, but it's only an indicator of that participation. And so, from my mind, if we have 10,000 registered voters, and one in 10 of those people are choosing a council, that's, that gives the council smaller mandate, that gives the local democracy a lower level of participation. It's not just about the, the percentage, for me. The, I think that I have forwarded, or others have forwarded, to the Board of Elections and the city clerk, a number of studies that have been done in California, those are the only ones I'm aware of. Because, of course, this isn't a new thing, this isn't an untested idea, to the best of my knowledge, and I welcome disagreement, and that's what I'm, I'm asking for response on, there's, there's no document that I'm aware of that shows that any city that made this change had lower turnout. And in California, the studies, the studies that I'm aware of, including testimony to the state legislature, spoke of two facts. One, that one of the single biggest determinants of whether minorities turned out in municipal elections was whether the election was in, was synced or in off years. And two, for Hispanic candidates for office, that the single biggest determinant of whether Hispanic candidates won their election was whether the election, the municipal election was synced with the state/federal election. And for African-American candidates for office, there was an effect, but it was not a significant effect. Are you all aware of any other studies that show a different trend, that synced elections have lower minority turnout, or that turnout goes down in synced elections?
No, I was going to comment, I, I did read probably most of what you forwarded. One of the major differences in some of its results, though, were unified ballot, and I think the unified ballot is a critical factor. The, the ranked, and some of those cities did have a mix of, if I remember correctly, I always want to say San Francisco, but there was another city also, there was a mix of a ranked ballot, ranked voting selection, and just one choice. But, the unified ballot seems to be a major determinant on some of those.
And so, just to explore where that would go, so then, the non-unified ballot would either change turnout, even though that didn't happen in Ocean City, or it would, that minorities wouldn't, wouldn't do a non-unified ballot?
Well, our, our problem is the non-unified ballot, that we can't be at this time on the state ballot, and also, and we also explored a little bit of two ballots, one our ranked voting, the other not, and we're, the state is not prepared to handle that for 2018. Beyond that, we don't know. I was just commenting that the unified ballot seems to be what helped with changing the elections, that it was, you went in and you had the ballot, one ballot in front of you, and one check-in, one process, or whatever.
But the, but the only place we have evidence from a unified ballot, from a non-unified ballot is Ocean City, and there was no effect of that. Okay, thank you.
I just, while we're on the unified ballot issue, I had a question regarding the estimated cost. I don't know if you looked at this, because we didn't ask you to yet, but just for the sake of argument, if we decided to, say, we want to move forward for 2020 and look at a unified ballot, do you know what the cost would be for that? Would it be comparable to the 60,000? Would, would you imagine it would be less?
Probably, Jesse?
I'm certain it would be less. It's, it's hard to know, because we haven't actually priced that out. It would definitely be less, because we wouldn't be running an election ourselves in addition to the other election, it would just be one election. We wouldn't have to staff those polling places, for instance, it would just be, just one ballot. So, it would be much simpler.
Thank you. Chief Herr. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that we would, I've heard this in emails that I've received from residents, and a little bit from the panel tonight, that maybe we don't want lower information voters voting. I think we want more people voting, and I think we always want more people voting. And the idea that we might say to somebody that, well, you haven't followed it that closely, you shouldn't vote, I think is just, I, I can't, I don't think that's an argument I would ever have expected to hear, honestly. No one who's contacted me who has raised concerns about this and opposition to this has said, here are the reasons I'm against it, and I'm not going to vote if we do it. So, I think everybody who's been voting will continue to vote, and then we'll get more. So, it seems virtually objectively the case to be that turnout, turnout will go up, whether it goes up enough to have been quote-unquote "worth it," I guess is, is the question. And I just wrote down a few things here, so I apologize if this will take longer, but in the, one, one thing that we hear a lot is, well, if it was just more of the races were contested, then we wouldn't have the problem. And I actually think that if we synchronize the elections, we could actually promote more competition in the elections, because I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, I had no plans to run against my predecessor, who I thought was doing a good job, but if I had, I would have looked at that and saw that he got a couple hundred votes the last two elections. And to me, I pretty much assumed those were all the people I knew in the ward, and I wouldn't have really had any way of running, because I have no path to get another 200-plus voters. So, that would discourage me from running against him if I had felt that he was doing a bad job, which I didn't. And that's Seth, just to be clear, I didn't think he was doing a bad job. But, if somebody said, well, don't worry about it, it's a presidential year, and, you know, 1,800 people are going to be running and voting in Ward One, or 998 in Ward Four, whatever the number is, then I'd say, okay, I can go out and find my own coalition of people, and I'm going to fight against the other guy, and we're going to battle over those other 1,600 votes. Suddenly, that becomes possible. So, I actually think that making a switch could promote contested elections. And if you look at just what happened in the most recent election, locally here for us, it's tempting to say that in the wards where there was competition, Ward One and maybe Ward Three, where at least, well, it's the mayor's home, home ward, that the, that that explains the higher turnout. But actually, in the, of the three wards that had the highest turnout, two of them, there wasn't actually a contested council race. So, I think, and I think in Ward Three, you know, Rizzi was popular, and it was, and it was the mayor's home, the mayor's home...
Rizzi still is popular.
We'll see by the end of the evening. But I think that may explain it. And so, I, I think there's other, if you look at the most recent Tacoma Park election, there's no argument, in my opinion, that having contested elections, contested races produces more turnout, because the data just doesn't show it. Two, two of the highest turnout wards really didn't have a contested election. And you might say, well, the mayor was running there. Well, the mayor was running in the other three, too, they had very low turnout. So, I just think that contested argument, to me, is off, and I actually think the reverse is true, that if we had more people voting, we would be more likely, not less likely, to get more, more, more people running. And then the last thing I just want to say is, so if you take the three highest turnout wards we had, where the turnout was 20 to 30%, again, understanding that the percent of what may not be accurate if the voting lists are not 100% accurate, but 20 to 30%, that's still 10 to 20% below what we get in gubernatorial years, and, and way below the 75%. So, even if we had contested elections in every ward, and pushed, and that pushed the vote all the way up to, say, 30%, which is what it was in Ward One, we're still way short of the turnout that we get, that we have gotten in recent years in gubernatorial, and vastly, vastly below what we got in the presidential year. So, I just think that the argument about contested doesn't hold up, and I think unless we really do want to say that we don't want people who we somehow have decided might know less about the election to be able to vote, then if we can work out these other logistical challenges, I think we ought to go forward with it.
Councilmember Schults? Oh, there, were you done, Councilmember Kovar? You didn't, okay. Councilmember Schults?
I disagree with my colleague, Councilmember Kovar. I think that people don't vote when there are, when there's no choice to vote, unless, of course, you live in, in Kazakas... of course, you live in Kazakhstan, where you're required to vote, and if you don't, you get shot. So you get 96 percent turnout, and that sort of thing. But in, in, let me just go through some history here. In, over the last five elections, in 2007, there were no races of the seven races that in the city were seriously contested. And by that, I mean where you, where people feel like there's a real solid choice of two reasonably qualified candidates. In 2009, we had two of the seven were contested, and of that, only the, really, the mayor's race was competitive that year. In 2011, we had two close races in Wards 2 and 6. The others were, when I say two, I mean, by that, the other five were, there was no opponent, or, or no effective opponent. In 2013, all of the races were effectively unopposed. So there was nobody to vote for. The race, the election was pretty much a foregone conclusion before the election occurred. And in 2015, there was only one race with a reasonable opponent, which happened to be my ward, where the election vote was 206 to 86. So, my, these are, these are the facts, and I think if we just go back in history further, you'll find that the same, same pattern. The reason that people don't vote is that, there's several, but one of them is that the vast majority of people in the city are comfortable with the way the city is run. Either that, or they're just plain indifferent. It just simply does not matter to them. And so they don't, they just don't think about voting. They don't need to vote, in their opinion. And I guess the question that I, I come up with is that if there's only one candidate, say, in Ward, it's all, just say Rizzi's, just pick on Rizzi, he's a good guy, easy to pick on, what difference does it make if he gets 250 votes in Ward 3, or 450 votes in Ward 3, and there's no opponent? Is, does that mean he's any more elected? Does that mean that he has a bigger mandate to do courageous things than he would have otherwise? No, it's, it's meaningless. And that's, that's the problem, that none of us up here, and I, with all due respect to Peter's comments, which I think were well, well articulated, that all the numbers you can get people to turn out and vote are pointless if you don't have choices, or, you know, realistic choices. Now, and, and that's why, when, when Mr. Effingham comes here and thank you for showing up from, from Common Cause, and talks about a sevenfold increase in Baltimore because of the changes in the election date. Baltimore, which is my hometown, I lived there and worked there for many years, so I know it well, well, it's pretty much nonpartisan. I mean, there's about as many Republicans in Baltimore as there are in Tacoma Park. That, those are hotly contested, mayoral races and council manic races, as well as the president of the city council. And, and you, and I don't need to tell you more than that, everybody knows that that's a very, and we don't have hotly contested races. None of our elections are issue-oriented here. People vote because they know the person that they're voting for. I mean, they're, they're more like high school elections. And I don't mean that in a condescending manner at all. It's just the simple fact is that, I guess one of the things that, that I guess I'm concerned about is while we think it might be, Councilmember Kovar suggests that a co-location election will produce more candidates. The way I see it, if, and if I'm wrong, I asked members of the election board to help me fill in the gaps here, is that the campaign period is going to be longer. It's going to, I mean, at least, what, I think, was it, you said a month longer?
Yes.
Approximately, okay. But more so than that is that candidates are going to be competing for attention by residents to all the other candidates that are out there, and all of their house parties, and all of their mailers. And we all know what it was like leading up to the April primary, just buckets of mail. So when I go to knock on somebody's door in Ward 6, am I going to be surprised if somebody peeked up behind the curtain and decides not to open the door, because this is the last person they want to see is another person knocking on their door? I'm, I, I'm fearful that the candidacies are going to be, they're going, people, candidates are going to have to spend a lot more money in order to get their, their neighbors' attention, particularly if you're a new candidate running for, and, and empty seat, for, for example, like, like Councilmember Kovar did last November, and Councilmember Koreshi did last November. So, I, I just, and I've been, in my elections, I've spent somewhere between $300 and $400 at most on an election. I just print out my own literature, and take it down to community printing, and stick it in the doors, and knock on them. And it's simple. I don't have to compete with anybody, and I, I just fear that we will, we'll get over, overmatched by, by all of that. And so I think when we talk about, when, when Common Cause says, oh, look, we got a sevenfold increase in Baltimore, which is fantastic, by the way, it's just wonderful, understand, you're talking about things there where there were some very, very heavy-duty issues in, in the Baltimore election. You just, just had the riots in Northwest Baltimore, and a lot of, a lot of emotion there. Trying to compare that to, to, to the city of Tacoma Park is just basically absurd, and I just don't really appreciate that kind of information that has no relationship to our experience here.
Thank you. I'm going to jump the line, because I can. I would say, given some of the remarks that were made, in my mind, it's all an "and." Yes, if we had more contested elections, that would be good. And if we synchronized our elections, so it made it easier for people to vote, I think would also be a good thing. As we're going back and looking at past elections, I just want to remark on 2015 specifically, because I think the Board of Elections did an outstanding job in 2015. And by having the outreach you did, the early voting in numerous locations, and also, I would just say, the number of voter forms we had. Even though Councilmember Schultz may not have considered my race a contested race, I certainly did. I had about 10, nearly 10 debates with my opponent. And I will say, even though housing was a priority of mine before I started debating with Mr. Holmes on this, it made the issue much more high-profile for residents and voters in this city than if he had not been in the election. And so I think it was very important that we had a contested race, and we also had nearly 10 different debates, not only here, but in the, in the apartments on Maple Avenue, as well as in people's homes. So I would just like to say that I think it's an "and" that we should be doing all we can to make it easy and a good experience for people to vote. I would disagree with Councilmember Schultz. I don't think the reason people don't vote is because some, maybe some people indifference, or that they're content. I meet with people, residents a great deal, who might not have voted, and they're not content. But it might be that they're working two jobs, or they have small children, or they kind of forgot, or weren't paying attention at that time, because a lot is going on. So again, it's not that they're indifferent or content with what they're doing, but we have not made it as easy as possible to have people, especially those who don't feel engaged in our process, to be able to vote in this country. So I just, I wanted to say, I really think that we should be looking at everything, and I agree with Councilmember Smith, that I would love for us to look into also mail, voting by mail in the future. So, all right. I'll probably mess up the order of this, so we'll start, I think Councilmember Koreshi was next.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I'll be honest, I'm sort of right smack dab in the middle of this issue, in the sense of, I think my colleagues on both sides make very, very good points. I think the purpose behind it, Councilmember Mills, right, if you look at the data out there, and I've looked at things he's sent me, I've independently researched it, where synchronization has happened, there's been a clear increase in voter turnout. I don't know if that's necessarily led to more contested elections and more candidates. I haven't seen that data, but I'm sure, it seems logical that that would be the potential next step. So I totally value that. Although, to me, it's less persuasive comparing this city of 15,000 to the second most populous city in the United States of Los Angeles, or to Baltimore. But cities like Ocean City, although they're, I think they're smaller than us, right? They're like half the size of us. Sort of a resort city, but at the same time, seeing that they've been able to keep, at least in this new phase, been able to synchronize, to me, the key is really going to be how we maintain the unique nature of our elections, and I would like more from, from the Board of Elections on that, whether it be in writing, as an email to the council, on how do you foresee, if we were to move forward with the resolution with a non-unified ballot in 2018, how the numbers are impacted with our unique constituencies, or voting eligibility requirements with youth, and non-citizens, and felons, and write-in candidates, and instant runoff voting? And this other issue that I raised before, the impact of the nonpartisan nature of our municipal elections, I think is huge. I don't think I'm necessarily in the minority here. I think many people from the outside looking into the United States say, one of the biggest sort of strengths and weaknesses of our overall electoral system is sort of our two-party machine system that we operate in. And I'm concerned that, and it might just be me being concerned, and it might not be an issue, and that's what I want to hear, frankly, that if we do go down this path, will there be any impact on the nonpartisan nature of our elections? Because putting aside for a moment the issues that you would have to contend with at the national level, you know, could I, as an independent candidate here in Tacoma Park, decide that I want to run on some gubernatorial candidate's ticket? We want to run together, because that person cares about this, this constituency, and I think that he or she is popular, and that'll help me win the election. Maybe we can't. Maybe that's illegal under the state charter, or whatever it is. That's important for me. The other thing about the nonpartisan nature of our elections, which is important, which I think is a point that Councilmember Schultz brings up, and I agree with Councilmember Kovar, too, that we should never, it almost sounds like a form of a poll tax, we should never say that if you're uninformed, you're not entitled to vote. I, I don't think that everybody is saying that, though. I think what, what is unique and awesome about our elections is that that day, and the days leading up to it, in the early voting locations, the central focus of every individual that we touch and engage is city elections and city issues. It's not going to be drowned out by the national and state level, or county level issues that we all listen to on a daily basis on the 24-hour news cycle. So it's not only about keeping them informed, just having informed voters in general, it's informed on the issues that impact them here at the municipal level, which a lot of municipalities have a tough time engaging their population about. Because honestly, at the end of the day, nobody cares as much as they care about what is the next stupid thing some national politician is going to say on, on CNN. So I think that's, that's, that's important. It's important that out here, when all of us spent the entire day of the election day here, that it was, you know, the Rizzi-Koreshi and Kate Stewart signs, and the Tim Mills signs, and it wasn't drowned out between Jamie Raskin signs and Chris Van Hollen signs. You know, like, I think the fact that when people came here, their focus was this election, I think is very important. So, the, the nonpartisan aspect of things is important to me, but I still believe that the overall purpose of this, of why we went down this road, of why we put this advisory question on the ballot, is a very noble one. And frankly, I voted yes for it, because I think it's a, a good step for us to take to see if we can increase voter turnout. Now, in terms of contested or uncontested elections, I think we try to focus so much on how available is the election to other people? I think we can make this job a little more attractive, too, and that has nothing to do with elections. I'll be honest. I mean, people just can't afford to do this. People don't have the time to do this. So if you're not going to pay them enough to do, in many respects, a thankless job is another full-time job, why would they do it? It has nothing to do with whether they're going to be here to vote for Hillary Clinton on the same day as Kate Stewart, although that would be kind of cool, but. So I think that's important. So I think, as we move forward, I'm, I'm excited about being persuaded by either side of the issue. I believe in the unique nature of our politics. I think it's, the local politics here are real. It's, you know, it makes you like want to whistle the national anthem when we're counting those votes by hand. Losing that, losing that, I think would be kind of sad, but I also recognize that there are tons of people in our community who just aren't engaged. No matter how hard we try, maybe we will be successful or not, but if this is a step in the direction of getting those people engaged, then I think we should explore more. But I think we need more information. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Stepping back a little, and looking at the reason that we've started to talk about this is, it's not to increase turnout, it's to increase participation, as Councilmember Koreshi was saying. We really want to see more participation in the city government by the residents, and specifically, participation in the election process. That doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that we're looking for more candidates, although that would be a good, a good thing, but it's really increasing the awareness of the community and on the issues, and interest in, in kind of picking sides on those issues. And I think one of the things that, that we have to think about, aside from this thing we're here tonight for, is how do we start to identify the issues that are important enough to people so that they will participate? And I think that many of the, many of the people who live in this city don't feel like the city government is really dealing with the issues that are important to them. And so as we move forward, I think that's something that we have to also pay attention to. This proposal, I think, to me, it seems clear that it would increase the number of people who are voting in the, for the city representatives, because they're going to be here on the, for the other candidates at the state and the federal level. And while they're here, I, I would hope that they, because they know they're going to be here in these, the city questions are going to be on the ballot, that they're going to be more interested in, in participating and learning about those, so they can make informed decisions when they do show up. But I think it's clear that there will be more people coming down and voting, as they did in Baltimore, but maybe not to the same, the same level. So anyways, I'm still on the fence. I, I tend to think this is a, a good thing that we, that the council has taken on to, to struggle to answer this question, how do we get greater participation by the residents at Tacoma Park? I'm tending to be in favor of this at this point, but I still wait to hear what my colleagues say, and I, I think I can endure this regardless of whether or not Mr. Koreshi questions my stamina.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. You know, the state law gives municipalities the opportunity to, you know, craft our elections the way we want. And we can have felons vote whenever we think it's okay. And we can have felons vote whenever we think it's okay for them to vote. We can have undocumented people come and vote in our elections. I don't understand why we would want to give away that right by synchronizing our elections with everyone else. And I might hear this from my colleagues from Baltimore City, but the General Assembly's not really gonna care what Baltimore City's gonna do. But they are gonna care about Tacoma Park changing its elections. And people are going to ask themselves, huh, so Tacoma Park thinks that having these types of rights is not important anymore? That we don't need to be independent of everyone else's elections? And that has been something that municipalities have fought for in this state for as long as I've been going up to Annapolis, working on the Legislative Committee. And anytime members of the General Assembly try to make changes to election law, municipalities fight it, because they do not want the state to tell us how to run our elections. So why would we give away this right? I mean, we can't decide how we want to tax ourselves. We can't decide if we want a sales tax in, in Tacoma Park. But the one right that we have are elections. We're just gonna say, you know what, we're gonna synchronize it with everybody else. And I just think there'll be more ramifications on other things that municipalities want, and that we have fought for, for a very long time, that the General Assembly is going to say, well, since Tacoma Park, who's always been a leader in being different from everyone else, since they have made this decision, why don't we make decisions, some other things, that Tacoma Park or other municipalities might believe is very important to them? Like highway user revenue, which is something that municipalities have been fighting for, for a very long time, since the Great Recession. These things, it's not just that simple to make these type of decisions, and the General Assembly is going to pay attention. And they're, and it's going to hurt us doing this. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. One of the things that was mentioned earlier was what it's like to be voting in, in an off year. And I think if you have maybe the type of job where it's hard to get time off, and you go to your boss and you say, you know what, there's a vote today, I gotta take the day off. What are you talking about? There's no vote today. The presidential vote's next, next year, or the, or the gubernatorial vote is, is next year. And so I think there are plenty of people who would like to vote, who don't have the kind of job where they can vote, because it's just this local, little local vote that no one's even heard of. If you don't, you know, if you worked in Tacoma Park, people might know about it. But if you work elsewhere, you don't. So I think that's another reason why turnout might increase. Now, since my good friend mentioned my comments, I'm gonna return the favor. So I also felt like the mayor, that I did have some opponents. I had two opponents, and I, I don't think I was anywhere near in as many debates as she was. But I, I had a few debates also. And it wasn't just about, did I win the election or not? I thought it was good to get more votes, and to interact with more people. And that was what the process was about. And so I can imagine, well, let me just say, as a result of that, I talked to more people. And the more people I talked to, the more I heard about what various folks who live here wanted. Whether it made me better at the job, is for someone else to decide. But I think that was, that was a positive thing. And I can imagine, if we do synchronize the elections, and I'm at one of these precincts, or jumping around between three of them, I'm gonna talk to way more people on Election Day than I did last November. I mean, that's just borderline objectively the case. I'm just gonna talk to more people, I'm gonna interact with more people. And to me, absolutely, whoever said, I think, Councilmember Siemens, it's about engagement. It's not just about winning the election. So I think that's a huge plus. And does it mean that as a council candidate, if I'm running in the future, or the rest of us up here, we'd have to work harder? I think it does mean we'd have to work harder, and, you know, that, I don't see any downside to that. Really, I don't. I also think, though, that to say that this alone would address questions of engagement on the part of residents who maybe aren't engaged that much at a civic level, would be a mistake. So this is, this is part of that. But, and I've talked about these things before, and I, I think everybody up here would have others. But, you know, if we translate more documents for people to read, with eight thousand people don't speak English at home here in the city. Or if we do more of what we did before, when we have an official meeting of the city council, other kinds of meetings elsewhere, and not always having it here, even though this works best for the, for the television and so on. Or we get into more with the community Wi-Fi so that people can feel more connected. I'm sure there are lots of other things, too. So I would never say that if we just do this, then that will solve the challenges or problems that we have in terms of lack of engagement, or wanting there to be greater levels of civic engagement by our, our citizens. I think there's a lot of other things we can and should do along with that. So this isn't, you know, a cure-all for that. So, and I don't know, as, as far as Councilmember Smith's comments, I don't know how the legislature will react. I don't feel like we're giving up a right, because we could always change it back again if we wanted to. And we are, by definition, we can't keep our unique artisanal features, then we're not gonna go forward with it. That's in, with this, that's in the, in, in the referendum. And if we can't find a way to ensure that we keep the, the three features of our voting population, and the two features of our voting day ballot process, then we won't go forward with it. So I, I think a big, the biggest obstacle I see is, could we hire and train enough people to actually do this in, in, in the amount of time? And that's the part that I want to make sure I understand. Thanks.
If we do move forward and synchronize our elections, how difficult would it be for us to make other additional changes to our election law? To have, you know, just throwing this out here, voting by internet? Could we still have the right to do that?
I don't think you're giving up anything by changing the date of the elections. If, if you, with a unified ballot, there, there might be certain constrictions. But I, but with the concurrent election, you're certainly not giving anything up. Councilmember Mall?
Thank you. Ms. Abbott, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna add two comments. One is, my mind kept thinking, we were asked about voting by mail. The other thought might be changing the day of the election from a Tuesday to maybe two days of voting over a weekend as a consideration. I just thought I'd throw that out. But I, I did wanna go in, I did wanna comment about voting, because I feel strongly on it. I usually vote regardless of how many people are running. And I sometimes vote for the person who's running, I sometimes do not vote for the person who's running. I very rarely write in, and I very rarely don't vote. But the reason I go in to vote is to show support for my council member. And I want my council member to know that when he's up here talking, or when he's putting these extra hours in, that he has a support of, part of his community behind him. Or, I, I just wanted to add that. So probably, even if you're not contested, next time, Peter, I'll vote for you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. And I, I would just like to say also, just as Councilmember Kovar said, you know, when we looked at the election results, and Jessie knows this as well, I kept bugging her, I'm like, did, for the mayor, did I actually get the most votes? Any mayor did? And it's, it was important to me, because we put a lot of effort into outreach those months before that election. And to really reach out to sixteen and seventeen year olds, and particularly, non-citizen residents. And so I, I would just like to echo, for me personally, the number of people who voted for me in this election and in my prior election meant a great deal. I ran, I considered it a contested election, but I also had set a goal for myself when running, and thought, this, this is how many votes I want to get. Because this is how, this is how many voters I want to make sure I'm engaging and talking to. Councilmember Mall, will you speak? Were you?
I think I'm next.
Okay, you're next, yeah.
And just sticking to this issue, I ran an uncontested race. I knocked on three hundred doors, and literally printed in my flyer that, I know I'm uncontested, but I'm begging you to come out and vote. Because when we're sitting in a council chamber with no one in the audience, that I know that you, that I have your support, or at least the city, the democracy in the city has your engagement. And so at, you know, at that level, you know, that is, to me, a huge thing, being out here. And I know it made a difference to some of the people who came out and voted, and said, happy to show up and just, you know, spend twenty minutes in line and do that for you. And it really does make a difference to me every week for forty-six weeks of the year or so. I'll sort of run through a few issues quickly. I think to Councilmember Koreshi's point about partisanship, on the, on the one hand, it can never really cross the line with partisanship, because we don't have a primary. And so there's no way for us to have the endorsement of the Democratic, Republican, Libertarian, or other party. We could affiliate ourselves with somebody, but many people in city council races already do. They get endorsements from any, an existing council member or mayor, a state politician, et cetera. When I ran my first time, my opponent ran an awesome race. There was a block of candidates who ran against me. Councilmember Daniel, that's in candidate, but Councilmember Daniels Cohen, Councilmember Grimes, and, and Ms. Lurie Chakutian all ran against me. All put flyers out in my ward, all went, to some extent, door-to-door with my constituents, running against me, as did, and the Labor Secretary, now Labor Secretary, also endorsed my opponent. So I'm pretty sure that we have that capacity right now to feel like you have a pretty uncomfortable spotlight on yourself. The issue, Councilmember Koreshi also, but also Councilmember Smith brought up, the, the special artisanal, I think it was the word I heard, nature of our hand-counted ballots, and then the issue of state control. I think it's the state constitution that establishes the right of municipalities to run their own elections. It's not a state law. We could check that.
Yeah.
When, when the city moved to allow non-citizens to vote, there was a challenge from a member of the state legislature, and there was an Attorney General's report, Maryland Attorney General's report, saying, sorry, they can do that, because that's, and I believe that's the way the state constitution is set up. So unless they were to change the state constitution, which is very, very difficult, I do not believe that even if we sync our elections, we could, we would face more top-down direction from the state legislature. But to me, both points are an argument for syncing our election, but maintaining separate ballots. We can do what we were currently set up to do if we vote for this in 2018, which is have an election that happens at the same day, with people being able to go to the same place. But we can do our hand-counting, and we can, we will have a non, a non-unified ballot, so we can have all those questions be our own. The, the third point I want to make is with regard to the sort of information behind this. And so I'm often struck by how difficult it is to decide on something, because the facts are not clear. There's no information, we're trying something new, as we often pride ourselves on doing. Or there's just really solidly two sides of a coin. You can pull out data that shows that this worked here, but it didn't work there. In this issue, there's really, again, we're, we're not pioneers. We're the two-hundredth or the four-hundredth city, or maybe the thousandth city, it's a little unclear, to take a step like this. And there's, there's no one in a year-plus we've been talking about this issue has been able to provide any information to suggest it doesn't do what, what it would be intended to do. That it appears to have benefits for minority turnout, it appears to have benefits for minority candidates to win. And it appears to have a significant, an incredibly significant effect on turnout overall. So it's a case where we really have evidence that to, to the intent we, we set out when we started this process, that it would achieve those things. So there's a, there's a very clear basis in fact to, to make this choice. And then just the last point I wanted to make is that, and we haven't referenced this tonight, but of course, there was a referendum. Tacoma Park only has advisory referendums. But earlier tonight, we talked about, and I agree with Councilmember Kovar's comments on this, with regard to wanting every person to turn out regardless of how much time they may have spent learning the issues or talking to candidates. If the voters that showed up in our last election, if you take the theory that they represent the best, most informed voters, those best, most informed voters told us by three-to-one margin that we should make this change. So if that's really our pool of people who are best informed, most engaged, care most about these issues, and we, we took, and again, I don't, I don't believe this, but we took that very best pool, they told us that, they didn't ask about cost. They said, if we can deal with our special classes of voters and our voting process with regard to same-day registration, if we can address all of those things, then we should make this change in 2018. And what I've heard from the board tonight and the clerk is that we can address those things and make this change in 2018.
Councilmember Schultz?
I just want to first say that one of the reasons that I love this job is that we get ourselves into these kinds of debates. And I feel like I'm up against some of the toughest debaters our society could create with some of, some of my, with my, my colleagues. Because I'm sitting here, and my little, my mind is, turning gets gears as fast as it can, trying to think about what it is, why I'm opposed to this thing, and, and hearing these, these quality cases being made. And it's, it makes it, it makes it, well, truly, it makes it very interesting. And the more, the wonderful thing is, is that when we all get done, we're still friends. I've never figured that out yet, how that happens. My, I, I had a question for the election board. And that is, is what, currently, our voting hours go from seven AM till eight PM. It's eleven, thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen straight hours. What are the hours of voting open, the polls being open in Montgomery County? Are they the same? Okay, so there wouldn't be any change in terms of the times that people would have available to get from work and all that other thing? Okay, good. My, my, one of my concerns is what are we, what would we possibly lose by going in this, in this direction? And I'm probably no more of a traditionalist than anybody else up here. But the way the elections, we run our city election right now in the off years, it's very clearly that when we do this, it is our election. And it's all about Tacoma Park, and it's not about anybody else in Maryland or anywhere elsewhere at the national level. And I think that's, that's important, that sense that this is our election, this is how we do it. Second, it's a big civic occasion. A, a lot of us, as Ms. Ha, Ms. Abbott said, and others have said very eloquently, is that a lot of people who do vote in Tacoma Park do it because it's the civic thing to do. Not because you don't know who's gonna become, be the next mayor, or, or be the person that, you know, you're about ninety-nine percent sure is going to win the election. We, we do it for some of the reasons that have just, just been said. But third, and perhaps equally important, is that it's a social event. All the candidates are in one place for thirteen straight hours at the community center. So residents can go there and see everybody, they can talk. And to me, it's about as hometown a kind of occasion as we have, because it's the most important event that happens in Tacoma Park every two years. I mean, it is, even though the elections aren't heavily, heavily contested, it's still vitally important for all the reasons that, that we've had. And I think that that's, that's really one of the reasons that people go out of the door and make sure they vote, because they want, they want to be seen, and they want to see who's there, and it's just part of that socialist, socialization process. And I don't want us to sort of poo-poo that, not, or diminish it in, in any way. And so as a thing, as a result, it's kind of, it's exciting. And it's also a Tacoma Park thing. And if, if we, if, if we go this other way, all of that is going to be lost, just disappear. Not to mention Gladys Harvey and Doris, and some other people's home cooking. Not to mention Gladys Harvey and Doris and some other people's home cooking that's there, the, the soup and the stuff that they, they cook to feed us poor souls that, you know, who are out there for 13 straight hours. So, you know, the community center will be effectively dark, and, and we're all going to be scattered to, to these various precincts. The Rec, the Rec Center is now consolidated with the Grace United Methodist Church polling booth, and at the April primary, people were standing in line for a half an hour. Cars could not get into the parking lot because the cars in the parking lot couldn't get out of the parking lot. And so, so a lot of people were in a hurry, naturally, it's always just, and that sort of thing. But, at, at the community center, it's, it's a different, it's a much more laid-back kind of Tacoma Park sort of thing. And I just, I'm just worried that when it's spread out at four different precincts, you're not going to, this, you're not going to have any of this. And that's, that's, all I'm talking about here is intangibles. But, I think, I think that they, they are. And, and of course, it's going to, it could cost the city another $60,000, and if you'll permit me to be a bit cynical, if we got 10,000 people registered, give everybody $6, and you'll get a whole lot more votes than by changing the dates.
Are you paying them? No.
I'm saying, if you come, you, you get, you get a $6 bill in Ameri, in U.S. currency. And, and so, think about that. I mean, it's, it's 60,000 bucks. That's a lot of money. I mean, we only get like 15, $10,000 in community development block grant money from the, from HUD for social programs. So, that's, it's, it depends on how you look at it. So, that's one of the things I'm concerned about, what we're, what we're going to lose. And I just think we ought to think about that. I applaud my, my, my colleagues up here for your, your tough cases that you're making. I have a feeling I'm going to lose, but by golly, I'll go down smiling.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. And I agree, I think when, when this idea first was presented to me, I was concerned about losing that specialness as well. But, I have to say that having not, prior to being elected to the City Council, working for local candidates in elections, and having done primary days and election days where we had state and federal candidates, there's still something very special about Tacoma Park. I mean, we have four precincts. It's, it's still at a very exciting time to be in Tacoma Park on Election Day.
Yeah.
And I have to say, even, you know, this past election, Primary Day, it was very exciting. My children were out, I had friends out. There was something still very special about it, even though we weren't in one central location. And for me, again, it's expanding what we have to include more people. And I think, yes, it's, it's nice that we have the community center, people come here, but still, it's, it's kind of like a club. And I, I actually think we need to expand that club to include more of our residents and to include more of the people. And I think each of us can work at making sure that the election stays special. Because I don't want to lose that, and I was joking with Councilmember Malle, if I realized I was going to lose Gladys's cooking on Election Day, I would not have voted for it. So, all I'm saying is, I, I think we can keep Gladys, keep the specialness of it if we work at it, but just include more people and have more voting across, and more engagement across our city.
So, what are the next steps?
So, the next, yes?
Is this still open for a public comment? Because I would like to make a public comment as a resident, not as a member of the Board of Elections. May I?
We're doing things a little different tonight for this. Go ahead.
As a resident, my name is Beatrice Yurik. I live in Ward Five. It's, I don't feel safe at night walking there. There are very many social problems, security problems. So, Tacoma Park is not all about the white-picked fenced, you know, houses where, you know, families can live and maybe, you know, walk their, their dogs at night. There are wards and people living in Tacoma Park that are not affluent, that have very little money, and that are contributing with their taxes to your salaries or stipends. So, that money is important. I work for federal government, I manage federally funded grants, and somewhat, my job translates into my personal life. And I'm very cautious with taxpayers' dollars. And my concern with this entire process is if costs will raise from the 13,000 to the 60,000, that's a lot of money. Because this is a small city, and there are areas that are very poor. There are people in my block that actually don't have enough money to pay for their gas, and they actually boil water to keep their apartments warm at night. So, there are very serious problems in this city, very, very serious, very, very serious. So, I ask the councilmembers from each ward to actually look a little bit further into other wards where there's serious problems going on, where, you know, even little money as this might be can be very helpful. So, what I'm asking the council is actually to be very mindful of the taxpayers' dollars that are going to be involved in this process. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you have to speak? Yeah.
I would sit my knee over.
My name's Lynn Bradley. I've lived here over 40 years, the majority of it in Ward Five, now in Ward One. And I guess I, I'd probably, I'm glad I don't have to take this vote because I think I can see that balance and what are the trade-offs. Because somebody, you know, as they say, what's the difference between a divorce and a tornado in West Virginia? Well, somebody's going to lose a trailer. Because somebody might lose a trailer in this, and there will be trade-offs. I just want to reiterate, having been a voter registrar, a precinct official, and a City Council member, and during the period when we changed the election many years ago into the November timeframe, there was a period where we literally registered people to vote every six months, and then different campaigns went forward. In a place like Ward Five, it's almost like we have two cities here. You've got the more middle-class precincts where a lot of people vote. Historically, the politicians and candidates looked at Tacoma Park for those votes, as you know. But then, we have some of our other wards that are actually more reflective of the diversity of the whole county than they really are of other parts of Tacoma Park. And so, I, I think you've got a, a trade-off here. One thing is, one of these days, you could have a contentious election or a contentious issue. I feel like between some of the, changing to ward-only voting was a big issue, unification was a big issue. To get tenants out to vote, there were a lot, there were several city elections, I won't say several, it seemed like there were a lot, but housing was a huge issue. And especially in terms of code enforcement, rent stabilization, that's what got people out. And so, that, I don't know what the answer is here, but I, I think there's both the characterization of, or the character of our city and what we want to keep. But, I think you're talking, and you all use the term engagement. It's almost like we want to get people engaged and lead them up to want to vote. Because, oh my God, there is an issue that's really important to us. The garbage isn't being picked up. Or, they're picking it up too early, and it's way too noisy, and, you know, I have to sleep late because I'm on the night shift. I mean, there are all kinds of different issues. And so, it's almost like you have to do that organizing and engagement activity to lead people up to really want to vote. And, and part of that is campaigning and candidates, and other parts of it are other things that you do long before an election or a nomination or any more electoral stuff takes place. I hate to put it this way, but voting is very middle-class kind of activity for a lot of our folks. The last two years, I've spent in my hometown in a very rural area in upstate New York working on campaigns. They have the same issues there, which, you know, coming from back and forth. And so, this is a universal problem, especially as younger people who are not going to respond to phone calls, who are living in social media, plus the other demographic issues we have. So, I do think you have to be careful. I've, I've got other things that I'll, I'll write to Peter and the rest of you, because I think this is a great conversation to have. But, I think you're talking, if you're talking about engagement, we have to go where people are and how they want to be engaged. And, and maybe there's other things that you need to be talking about. Maybe the Rec Department should be having mini-elections with every youth group of any age to get people to be civically engaged. Our high schools have dropped most of that.
Thank you, yeah. We're, I'm, sorry.
No, I know, I appreciate it. And I don't need to meander.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. So, Councilmember, yeah. Councilmember Siemens asked me, I, what are we going to do? We're wrapping up this evening. Thank, I want to thank the Board of Elections again for all the hard work on this. I think there were a couple of questions raised, we went back and forth. I know Councilmember Kreshi had asked a couple of questions about partisanship, if the board did have some thoughts on that or felt they could provide an opinion, as well as possibly more information to the City Council regarding the hiring and training. If there's other things that you felt that we should know about that, write that down, any other things that came up in your conversations. And then, if there was, I think the third thing that came up, and my colleagues can tell me if I missed something else, the other thing that I think is very important to all of us is also the impact on particularly the special populations who vote in our city elections. And so, moving forward on the, this was a special work session tonight. On Wednesday night, we are going to kind of review this. If people have further questions or concerns, we can discuss them then. And then, on the 21st, we tentatively have scheduled a resolution. The resolution is, because, we put this on the schedule because up to this point, we have just been doing hand votes to kind of say, okay, continue moving forward on this. And we feel it's important that we actually take a vote on a resolution to give you an affirmative, either yes, continue moving forward with the non-unified ballot in 2018, or no, stop the work you're doing and do something else with your free time.
I don't know if Jessie was going to add this. We're be, we're scheduled, the, Tacoma Park is scheduled to meet with the Montgomery County Board of Elections on the 19th.
Right.
And I was going to, one of the things I was going to say is to emphasize that we presented what our thoughts were. We need to talk with some of this and with the county board.
Right. Yeah. And I think that's why we scheduled the resolution tentatively on the 21st. So, thank you, Ms. Abbott. But, that's, that's why we didn't do it for next week, or this coming week, but we scheduled it for the 21st. So, hopefully, we'll have the information from that as well, that meeting on the 19th, realizing that because we will have to do charter amendments coming up, that if we do continue to move forward, we're on a fairly tight schedule. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just, Jeffrey Noel Nosbough, Ward Three. I, just, on the question I think you brought up that was raised about recruitment and training of, and hiring of judges, especially if it's going to be more than we normally hire. The Montgomery County Board of Elections has trouble hiring enough judges, and the judges we use overlap, that population overlaps. So, if they're all working the county election already and the county is short, I, I'm just saying that's going to be an issue.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Yes, Councilmember Kovar?
I just want to remind my colleagues to study your materials for the closed session on Wednesday, please.
All right. Is there, no. Is there any other questions we have for the board, or is anything else the, yeah, Councilmember Kovar?
I just want, no. I think, for all of us, I just want to say, look, you guys are putting in tremendous amount of work, and you're pushing boundaries, you're asking questions that have never been asked before, probably, and certainly not in Montgomery County. So, please know, however this thing turns out, that your work is being greatly appreciated.
And as I said before, your work at the last election and prior, just even thinking about how we engage residents, how we get more people to vote, has been very much appreciated by all of us. So, thank you. All right. I think with that, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you.